Okay, so we're rolling now. So this is just a continuation. We opened our meeting upstairs and we just came from a really positive event, which is the swearing in of 11 new firefighters. Thank you all for being here. And Charlie?
Professor Ross?
Yes.
Okay. So our 750 was to the continuation of the revocation hearings on the historic permits for Davis Automotive Company's public effects. On the latter, we discussed this with town council. The Keith said that each individual entity, each corporation, person, right, there's no tie in between them. So my recommendation to the board, given what council said, is that no action be taken. What it was, was that we were having a hearing on a revocation. The board could vote tonight not to do anything, it could vote not to revoke. And because right now, the permit is current.
Well, it would seem that we've got nothing to do. In fact, what the statements have been given by Joe and his attorney and our attorney, we have no jurisdiction.
Well, we have jurisdiction, but there's no action.
No action at this time. And that's what my motion would be.
Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in.
That's it? Boy, I'm sick of that. You know what I'm gonna do on my desk?
Well, you should go upstairs. There's a lot of celebration going on.
They're the country club on the road.
You know that you used to spend some time. Go ahead, you got some old friends up there.
I'll see you in a couple days.
Thank you, Jerry.
On Davis Automotive, the concern was on their, both the property taxes and excise, they were, I paid a claim for the property taxes, so we cleared that. They started making payments, which I believe is sufficient. They paid about 15% of the excise tax bill that they owed. I thought we confirmed that with the treasure collector. So my recommendation on that one also is no action be taken, the permit not be revoked.
Who's this, Emily McCarry?
I will make, I will entertain a motion to take no action and the revocation of Davis Automotive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. We'll figure it out. I'll make that motion. We're a little off. We're a little off. We'll get back on track.
So 8:00, we had a Hops library parking lot discussion. That's true. You, Sue.
Hi, Jean.
Take it easy already, just came from a press meeting.
Oh, yeah, no, this is easy for you.
In that case, nothing we could do would be any worse.
This is easy for you.
I did, previously, when we originally scheduled this meeting, which was four weeks ago, Hops had been noted by the building committee, by and such. Jean's here on behalf of the library. What had happened was that, back in May, the library trustees had asked for permission to put up additional signage, so that additional parking spaces over at the combined parking lot for Hops, the libraries, et cetera, be reserved for library patrons. The request at that time was for two signs, based on the diagram, and three signs were put up along the line at Hops.
It was for, well, it was for eight signs altogether, and then ended up being 10 signs.
So...
The selectmen approved, and actually, I have the letter, and I thought that it did say eight signs, and I think actually, I have the letter that the selectmen approved the signage. It doesn't say how many.
Well, the diagram does.
Yeah, I think in my email, I had said eight, and it ended up being 10.
And what I wanted to do was have a discussion because obviously, there's a need for library patrons to have a place to be. Thing is, though, we're going to be encountering something, hoping, in next year, some increases in usage of the parking lot, both for Hops, if we get the construction done this summer, but also if the Council on Aging project is fruitful and it gets built next summer also possibly, or at least starting of constructions next spring and next summer, we're going to see additional parking. I understand everybody wants spaces, and everybody wants spaces for their particular use. The problem is, we have a limit on the number of spaces available. In some cases, especially when the school's not in session, people are going to be able to park over the school lot, whether it's for Hops or for the library. Actually, they do that on the table right now. But I want to have a discussion because if we get, you know, if we get to the point of having every space warrant for a particular place, then what we're gonna, we may end up with this turf wars. Well, so-and-so's parking over there, and that's a library spot, but they're over the playground, or vice versa. Who's enforcing that, for instance? I mean, we're gonna have a parking lot patrol? I don't think so. But also to say, we may need to start considering whether it would make sense to expand the parking area into the area between where it is now and the water department. It's, you know, it's not an easy thing, is that simply because we've got unlevel service.
I don't see that people parking over there.
And one of the pieces of equipment that Hops is actually looking at is a slide that goes down that hill.
Right, but we're not talking into the hill, but we're talking...
Okay. All right, I just want to make that note.
Yep.
Well, I was always, even when, you know, I was on the original Hops committee, and it always seemed a little strange that there was no barrier there for two parking lots from that part into the playground. But I actually counted the number of spots, and...
I'm sorry.
My count was 44 parking spots in the library.
There's that many there?
Yeah.
There's that many there? There's 44 spots. I actually went out and counted them. And so with the two additional signs, so that's 10, and then the six staff, so that's the library, high-hozy and six, 16 parking spots out of the 44. I will say that I have these pictures, and I want to show them, but I don't, I don't, try not to be negative, because on a Saturday morning, on a soccer game, you know, 9:00 comes and the soccer starts, and I see a really lot of people parking over at the school once the signs went up and walking over. Those are the people that are following the rules, and those are the people that I respect. But, and I did print this off, this is 10 minutes before the library opened on a Saturday, and you can see there's one library spot open. And then there's a, there's a woman trying to pull out a handicap because it's the only spot open. And this is 10, 15 minutes before the library's open. So the sign's in the air, and a lot of people are respecting them as long as there's other places to park, but then...
You know, that's unfortunate, because it gets back to Charlie's point of who's going to be the parking. Like, I don't know if the police get involved in something like that, if it's, we don't have signs posted.
Well, but let's say they do. Let's say they do. Are we issuing tickets?
Well, I think there has to be signage in order to issue a ticket, so that we'd have to have signs that say, you know, you would be fine if you're not parked, but then how do you prove that?
Well, and also, I just think you're running into a situation that we're causing a lot of bad, you know, I understand that the library has a legitimate concern, but what we're doing is, especially if it's our residence, is driving them, like, the town is doing this, and it doesn't matter if it's the library, the police department, the board, selectmen, I mean, more parking spaces may be an easier solution.
Exactly. And I think those pictures, and Jerry had actually sent, you know, me like probably 28 more pictures from a different Saturday.
Oh, yeah, I come up there on Saturday and all the way down Hemlock Lane, there's cars parked out over that parking lot. There's not as many in our parking lot, town parking lot, as there on Hemlock Lane the other years.
So it's closer, we're getting the cost.
And I do want to say also that we had the turkey trot on Friday morning, and Mr. Vodri had sent out an email to all of the parents, asking them to respect those spaces because it was Friday and we have programming. And the parents did a really great job of respecting that, so I appreciate Mr. Vodri's efforts. We've also worked through, there's afternoon school buses. I'm not really sure what, who the students are, but Mr. Vodri has asked me that they, you know, come and do drop off and pick up at the library parking lot. And that also is something that we've had to work through with him, and we've done a good job with that. Because what the buses were doing was, you know, pulling in and then pulling around and, you know, lining up like five in a row, so nobody could even really get around it. So now what they do is they pull into those signs on the Hops playground where it says patron parking, and then they wait, and as a student comes out, they kind of go after them. So, you know, Mr. Vodri and I are really working hard to kind of help with the school policy.
I don't think anyone's ever said to you, "We're cooperating with people." We just have a dilemma with, you know, supply and demand, you know? We got a big demand with few parking spaces.
Right, and when, and when Hops reopens in its glory, it's gonna be even more challenging to find parking. And I guess we're lucky that we have such a large parking lot, you know, that's not too far away, that those side spaces in front of the school.
Well, I think one thing we can do is maybe suggesting is to put a sign up saying, "Extra parking in the town parking lot," because I don't think a lot of people realize that they can park over there. You know, maybe the townspeople do, but people coming from out of town like soccer games and stuff, they'll realize, maybe we have a sign saying that there's more parking spaces over by the building. It might help guide people in that direction if they come over. Hemlock Lane is very obvious. Everybody parks out down that driveway. But maybe that knows they can park in Sparkville.
I'm not sure where the additional two spaces are. I know one of them is along the Hops playground.
There are two spaces, there are three signs along Hops.
Right. And I think the original...
There's two.
Two, I have, was two. And then there's, there's an extra one, because there's currently 10 signs up. And I think that other one is in front of the library building. So, and then there's a handicap and a banned access spot in front of the library. Oh, here's the original. But that one's over there. Oh, two, yeah. Yeah, here's the original. Then I probably kind of want that back when I already bought that spot. I can't really tell where the extra spot, because here's eight, so one, two, three, this is Hops playground, four, five, six, seven, eight. Maybe one, maybe over here.
Yeah, there's one there.
There's one there, and then there must be another one, and it must be this one.
Well, that would make sense if that's library spots. Well, oh, I understand where we are now.
Yeah. See, originally, we, this, this is what was approved.
Right.
Two spots over there, three here, and then three here.
Yes.
And then this must be the other side.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I understand, like, 16 out of the 44 for libraries, but we, we had not, like, I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but those two extra spots came to our attention.
Yeah.
And so that's why we feel like if you're gonna vary from what we had approved, we kind of needed to get a heads up about it, because when we look at it, I know it's only two spots. And I recognize your point of, of those 44 spots, there's 16. So it's reasonable, you know?
Which is reasonable, that...
Well, we, I don't know that we want to do anything about it, except to try to put more...
But I think, but I think at this point, you need to keep things where they are. We're not gonna, does it need more spots, whether it's the library or Hops or anybody right now? I think we've got, I think choice, signage, I think would be one thing, others to, and unfortunately, it's gonna take a while, because we don't just have a lot of money for this. We need to get an engineering firm in to do a design of a parking area, to extend the parking area, because that's gonna require drainage, it's gonna require leveling field in that area and such. It's, you know, it's not simply having Steve Hayward go out there and pay the...
Pay the asshole down, yeah.
Yeah, to be perfectly honest, I mean, I think obviously 16 spots on 44 spaces, I think that is reasonable, and I think it's obviously reasonable that you would want to know where the other two spots, how that happened. I don't know. I think it just, I think it just happened. You know, I think he must have ordered them, and then they came in, and then he put them up. I think it's something as simple as that.
Yeah, and that's fine, as Charlie, I don't think that we need to change anything, but I think just going forward, if something happens, then we just need to be informed. And I think it was important for us to have the discussion about what our future looks like, because I think it's even gonna be more challenging once Hops is open again in its full glory. But those are things that, you know, speaking of Hops.
Is anybody else here to talk about the parking lot?
No. All right. Thank you.
So, Jean?
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you for coming in. You know, if we're doing anything, you know, in terms of having anybody come in to look at that, I'll make sure you're in the...
Okay, I had sent you an email about the lighting, though, in the parking lot.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that at another time?
Sure. No, no, we can talk about it now.
So I've had a couple of patrons over the years, and then a couple more most recently, talk about the lighting as, you know, for programming at night, especially this time of year when it gets so dark.
Gets dark quick.
That they, they can't find the entrance to the parking lot to come to nighttime book clubs and things like that. So I talked to Jerry a lot about this, and, you know, a better solution about illuminating that sign. And he came up with, his best thought, was to change that LED light on top of the street pole.
Oh, you think that will help?
Is it an LED?
I don't know what it is up there now, but he said that there's some lights over at town, you know, town hall in this building, and those are great. Those are bright and it lights up everything.
Yeah, those are more floodlight type.
I think it would help with the, with the crosswalk.
Yes.
So I don't know if that would come out of library budget, or if you guys would assume that, and how I go about kind of getting that done.
The thing, we've got a streetlight budget.
Right.
But it pays literally just for the electricity. We don't, well...
The sign itself.
We'll probably have to do an article at town meeting, I suspect.
Okay, so that would be in May?
Yeah.
So I can just talk to you about that?
Well, what you could do is, I can't imagine it'll be $5,000, right, do you think? But I would actually send an email to the capital planning committee, so in case we need to use some free cash.
Or I'll just get it done now.
Okay. All right. All right, just...
So, so you want me to send an email?
No, it's okay. I'll get, I'll get a capital thing, I'll write it to them.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Yeah, that was way easier than a trustee meeting.
You should hang out with us every Tuesday.
I know.
No, because half the time, we're not here. Our next appointment's 8:30. Pam, did they do their normal?
No.
Okay, so why don't...
Yeah, firm? Yes. So, did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes of October 10?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. And I would move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 37 for $349,803.99. Vending warrant number 38, $49,069.71. Withholding warrant number 39, $136,933.39. Vending warrant number 40 for $46,215.72. School warrant number 41 for $358,601.84. Amelant's commitment 1B, I'm sorry, 10B, for $10,072. And Amelant's commitment 10C for $27,437.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye. I move to affirm the following warrant commitments. Payroll warrant number 42 for $362,873.82. Vending warrant number 43 for $366,364.84. Withholding warrant number 44, $141,901.23. And finally, mobile park service, $5,160.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'd like to approve the selectmen's bills for estate. Law account miscellaneous KP Law Service, TC Service, Professional Services through September, $132.51. Audit, Prince Malloy and Marini, LLP, $10,000. Law account, Michael Gilman Esquire, $187. Insurance, $1,602. That's for hack. Selectmen's expense account, WB Mason Incorporated, for supplies, $383.94. And finally, the law account for Dust Williams and Brooks, Drenzo and Holland, $6,899.99.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a couple minutes early.
Eagle Scout Project, do you want to speak?
Yes, Nate is here. Nate is here. So Nate, how are you?
So, we've had a while with Hack and Project, and that, I proposed three benches, and we're dealing all that with flowers on them at the hack meeting. You guys changed two benches with no flowers and Trex plastic. I think we met with, I think, six different committees. In the end, they did change one measurement about it. They moved, you know, they asked me...
And that was the beautification committee asked you to, I mean, I'm sorry, the historical commission asked you to change the location.
Yes, so asked me to move them 30 feet diagonal, diagonal, sorry, from the flagpole instead of the monument. Just had a rough engineering there.
So did you meet with Mr. Shea there?
Yes.
And so did he mark them with the grass, or did he...
Parks committee has marked them at one point. I want to say they marked them over there.
Okay.
They were marked.
Okay. And so that's what John Shea from the historical commission looked at?
Yes.
Okay. So they would be, you can just come here for a second. So they, no, that's all right. So they would be 30 feet away, right?
Yes.
So they would be right here, right? And they would be diagonal?
Yes.
Looking at the flag?
They'd be, I'm trying to, parallel with the street, I think, almost.
Okay. So this is the, the flagpole, and so, okay, so they would be around the flagpole and not the monument?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great.
Is that achievable?
Okay. So I noticed in one of your memos from the beautification committee, I know that you said now that, you know, you're going with what we had asked, which is the plastic. But in your memo to the beautification committee, you had talked about that wood again, and I just want to make sure that they, it was a little confusing when I was reading it. So it said, you began the paragraph by talking about the teak wood or whatever that wood was, and then you ended it with the plastic. So I just would want you just to double check with them and say, as, just so you know, it's gonna be the plastic.
All right.
Yeah, that's the only thing from when I was, I was looking at...
Is that the modified wood when you talk about flowers?
Yes.
Trex, Trex.
The Trex, yeah. So that's the only thing, but I just wanted to verify that the historical commission knows that it's going to be Trex and not wood.
Yes.
Perfect, because that's important, because they typically have concerns about it being as natural and historic as possible, so...
What happened was, when I got out of my meeting the first time, you guys?
Yeah.
I thought it was the same wood, the plastic, with cover.
Oh, okay.
So that was my problem.
All right. No worries. So I just wanted to make...
Fall off on that, yeah.
Yeah, and so does Mr. Shea, he is aware that they're gonna be white in color? Is that the color you chose? Or are they gonna be wood, but text? Do they look...
It's still the same color, mostly the same color, it's just plastic instead of wood.
So it's gonna look like wood, but it's gonna be a plastic? Okay, perfect. All right. And that, and you talked to the...
It's gonna be dark, plastic?
It's a plastic aquatic, it doesn't look like plastic.
No, I know, it looks like wood. Yes.
Well, what I'm saying is it's gonna be dark, tan, light?
Should be gray.
Brownish, light brown.
It's gonna be light brown. So that's why I asked if it was white. So we, we want to kind of know, I would want just to check the color. If you haven't checked with the historical commission on the color, did you, did you do that? Oh, you did? So, okay, perfect. So when you met...
It's almost like a redwood.
Yeah, so it's wood. So when you met with the historical people, you showed them this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. Perfect. All right. Awesome. So the changes are, they've gone to two, and the, they've changed the location from the monument area to the flagpole. Okay?
That's, that's agreeable.
Okay. All right. Awesome. All right, so tell us about your timeline.
Timeline, um...
Here you go. Thank you.
This weekend, I'm gonna meet with the boards of council, get the project approved by them. Saturday, I was gonna say, we're...
A fundraiser?
Fundraising, yeah. Fundraising, my funds for that, for this, there. And once that happens, I'm gonna build solid products and hopefully get it done within a few weeks.
Oh, you think you'll have it done before the end of the fiscal, I mean, this year?
Yes.
The problem is, he ages out when he turns 18 in March, and so we've got to get...
Okay, so you'll be moving in December, yeah?
Yeah, we have to get these in the ground.
Luckily, it's been a pretty nice fall.
March 30th. But the ground's gonna be, may be frozen in March, so...
Oh, he's in there, he's still gonna do it.
Well, you'll be, you'll be happy that it's been a nice warm fall. So, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to, for the final approval of, so all of you say you're aware, all of the approvals that were necessary with the edits we have in our files?
We've already promised to go ahead with the project at this time. I would, I would move that we give permission to Nate to continue on this Eagle project as laid out.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for coming in, Nate. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the board has an 8:30 appointment to hear from the public about a proposed truck exclusion for Pine Street from the southern end of it where it leads to Hop Street Route 105 to the...
Okay, question. Is that all trucks or just semi-trails?
It's under five, anything over 5,000 pounds.
Okay. I think I was going to say exclusive trucks, like, maybe...
So is everybody here for the Pine Street discussion? Awesome.
Anybody here? Who's here? Okay, just want to make sure somebody's here.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay, so how do we want to, oh, so does anybody want to start with any feedback of how they feel about it? Everybody's in favor? Okay, yes.
I will. I'm in St. Rose, I live on 56 Constance, 56 Constance Street, which is opposite of Pine Street. The notice I got said there's infrastructure problems. I haven't seen anything wrong with that road. I know the pipes, the pipe pulpit that's there, the shoulder, there's got some problems. Shifting truck traffic all, you know, onto, onto Street, I feel is gonna cause a lot of problems to people who use, who use Pine Street. Obviously, a truck, a 50-foot long truck, is, that's gonna use, go west, is gonna have to stop and wait a long period of time to be able to get out of that hood. The traffic's gonna back up. Nobody can get by to the right, but they currently do. The traffic's going to back up, nobody can get by to the right, but they currently do. I kind of don't believe the infrastructure is a problem.
In terms of the road width, the pavement for Pine Street is less in width than it is for Thompson. I believe it's 24 feet for Pine Street and 30 feet for Thompson Street. So Thompson Street is actually built more to allow for truck traffic than Pine Street is. I'm not saying you're wrong, it's of the condition, though I would think, you know, looking at Thompson Street, looking at Pine Street, Pine Street's in worse condition than Thompson, but.
Yeah, I have to disagree, sir.
Well, that's fine.
Their roadway's just been done, I think, three years ago, that's new pavement. It has been done, it has been done. So I don't believe that's really the issue there. I think there's more or less another issue. I would probably, if I had the gas, it would probably be jake brakes, because I can hear the same jake brakes, if anybody here is complaining about them. I hear jake brakes all the time over there. Shifting traffic is not going to cure that, other than a jake brake, you know, a ban on brakes after a certain time, maybe that's the solution to that.
We didn't receive any complaints about jake brakes as part of this.
So Charlie, did you want to just explain to the audience why we're here and why we're talking about this truck exclusion?
Because we did, in fact, have people ask about excluding trucks on Pine Street. To do that, this is part of the process, we did a truck survey to measure how many trucks were using Pine Street. It's over the 5%, which is more than would normally be allowed on a side street, which Pine Street's considered as a side state route. If the town wants to do this, it has to find an alternate, which would be in this case, Thompson Street. We have to send all the information up to Boston, but it only gets sent up if the board votes to, in fact, have a truck exclusion. Obviously, it doesn't, anything under 5,000 pounds can still use, would still be able to use Pine Street. Trucks making deliveries on Pine Street would still be able to use Pine Street.
So I went to the last traffic study committee, but I, but they didn't discuss this particular issue. Has traffic safety vetted this?
The. Not the exclusion on Pine Street specifically, no.
Okay, okay, yes.
Isn't this issue about the string going underneath Pine Street and the bridge falling apart? Are they out the Jersey barriers?
That's one issue, that the bridge as it is right now isn't in as good a condition as you'd want it until after trucks go over it.
Sir, could you identify?
My name's Bob Hevle, I live on that, 98 Pine Street.
Okay, do you have a recommendation or do you have a request about this?
Well, the way it boils down, is if the bridge is falling down and it continues using it, fall apart, no trucks are going over it from there on in. It, to me, I'm neutral on it.
Okay, I'm going to ask other people before I come back to you.
I've got a question. At one point, they were looking at.
Bonnie, could you just identify yourself? I know, we all know who you are.
I'm from 98 Pine Street.
Thank you.
I was wondering, when they were trying to put the senior citizens place down, they talked about putting a light at the top at the end of Thompson Street to help the traffic. Is that something that would be considered into that tour?
It was a very pricey.
It's not, it doesn't go part and parcel with this, in the sense of simply because we do, if we do this, and light is not automatic.
Yeah.
There'd be, if we wanted, whether or not we did, didn't Pine Street exclusion, if we wanted to put a traffic light at Thompson and Plymouth, 105 and 106, first, you do various traffic engineering studies, setting that aside and spending the money on that, it's several hundred thousand dollars these days to put in a traffic light system. So, again, it's not a situation, we couldn't do that, forgetting about the exclusion, it would be a commitment of the town's resources on whether or not we wanted to do it.
Yeah, no, it's just a consideration, everyone's concerned about traffic going on Thompson Street and trying to get on 106, getting in and out of there is tough, so.
Getting it without the exclusion.
Yeah, right.
Yes, do you have an opinion?
I always have an opinion, Bonnie.
No, I mean, Bonnie.
Elm Street, but I owe a part of the fall on Pine Street. Concerns in that trucks using Thompson Street come out onto 101.
I called her Bonnie, not Brenda.
That's all right.
They called worse.
I, no, no, I know.
What is it?
When, when new 106 was built, between Elm Street, old Plymouth Street was replaced with new Plymouth Street. Ralph Hayward was our highway surveyor. Ralph Hayward made all of the entrances at 106 for trucks, wide range. End of old Plymouth, start of old Plymouth, crossing Pine to Elm. You don't have that luxury at 105. You got houses right up to the, you would need another lane of traffic for trucks to properly make that turn.
In order to, yeah.
And you'd also need a light, because 18, I waited two minutes just to cross in four wheels from Pine Street towards Elm, with the various lines of traffic. An 18-wheeler is going to have to wait longer and make a wider turn.
So it's not something.
That's the bridge. And I'm neutral as well.
Okay.
But I can't see all of that truck traffic being able to turn left or right on 106. They need a wide angle, and you can't widen 105 there unless you go into Super Seal's front yard.
Which will not work.
Right? You can't add a lane because you've got blockers across the way.
Right.
It wasn't planned that way. Ralph planned it 30 years ago, the way it is, so they could turn and not hold up traffic.
Okay.
Can we let them go through Bridgewater?
No.
Up Southern Street.
No.
Cut your trucks off completely.
No, you can't, because.
Pay up, Bridgewater?
Bridgewater has to agree.
Pay them off. Is it cheaper than a bridge?
We got no money.
Sorry.
Mr., I'm sorry, Bonnie, you all.
I'm done.
Oh, thank you for that, though, really appreciate it. Mr. Andrews, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just kind of like to reiterate the same thing. I mean, you know, I drive a truck on the trail that come out of 105, turned left on 106, and in the afternoon, the sun is right there, I get hit with my truck right there. You know, at least at Pine Street, you get a good vision up and down, and you've got a wide intersection to get out there. Beyond that, I don't know if this is because the construction of the road down there is just containment on Pine Street, you know, we waited a long time to get that paved. Thompson Street's in tougher shape than that for sure, and, you know, if that's a problem, I don't see the highway surveyor here telling us what the problem is with Pine Street as far as if it is the culvert. If it was the culvert, I think you should be able to say what the solution was for it, if that, if that was the problem. Other than that, you know, the safety of the kids and people traveling up and down Route 106, I think it makes a lot more sense, keep it the way it is, if, in fact, at some point in time, the town chooses to put a light on 105 and 106, then maybe you can re-aggress it, but up until that time, I don't see putting the traffic over there and then waiting for a light, that's kind of how it works.
Okay, I know the survey was here earlier during a capital planning committee meeting, I'm not sure that he was aware of what. He's been so, he's been really.
Well, the only reason we're here now is because someone, a fellow citizen, didn't like the idea of trucks going down Pine Street.
It's unsafe with that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm just saying, that's why we're here. We're here to get information as to whether or not you as residents, how you feel about whether or not we should make the exclusion or not. What I'm hearing is that, no.
Michael?
Michael's around the 19 Pine Street. I just have a couple of observations, I don't know if you can make a decision on that. When we talked about this a few years back, I was between all night and shooting trucks along that line. It has since been corrected, but my tree is holding up, the service wires going across Pine Street. The trucks would come, flip the service wires, telephone, cable wires, constantly. And there's a rope from my tree limb to the service wires, that's the only reason, that's the only way of thinking of not keeping flipping the wires, trucks aren't going to flip the wires anymore. And also, once, when we put the Jersey barriers in, it creates another problem, because cars are not, they're going down the street the same speed. Jersey barrier is just over just enough, the cars are slowing down, our cars are going down the middle of the street and on to the opposite lane.
Yes.
And I've almost started, coming out of the bottom of my driveway, I don't pull up fast, I have to look, but I have a tree in a blind spot, I've almost kind of asked them three times, just for car being in the wrong lane, because they're not going, once they pass over, they're not, they're not getting back over to the other lane until they hit the island of 105. So I mean, that's, that's just a couple of issues, and that's, one has been because of the Jersey barrier, and actually, the car has hit the Jersey barrier because it's a big snow pile.
Why is the Jersey barrier?
That is causing it.
Because the culvert bridge is falling apart.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can send a note to the highways.
He's, he's well aware of it, the whole reason that the barriers are up there was that we got information from Mass Highway about that bridge, because they need to do inspections every so often, and Bob Adore, when he was highway surveyor, was notified about that, the records are with the highway department. We can ask at some point what Steve's plans are, but he's well aware of the situation.
Yeah.
The other thing that is also.
Could you mind, Brenda, just because he's had his hand up and I told him to wait?
Just too posh, my response. I don't know if anybody realizes that any vehicle over 5,000 pounds, that's an F-250 buck. All right, that's anybody, that's all, trucks like that will have a commercial plate because of the GBW. So are the police going to really enforce that, or are they only going to pick on somebody with a truck or something today? Because you're really, you're talking about people with an F-250. Secondly, there's no posted weight limits on that bridge, so whereas the Mass DOT oversees bridges, why haven't they been out there to put a weight limit on it if it's such a concern?
I can ask them, but they have them. Well, we do have an inspection report that says the bridge is a tiering, that's why the Jersey barriers are up there, but they had not, they had not provided me with, you know, any indication about putting weight limits on it.
Yeah, they pretty much tell you what they're going to do, but that's how they operate. So, I mean, if there's a problem with it, they're going to say, we stop using this bridge, or stop putting weight limits on X amount of pounds, and that's what they do.
Thank you.
I have to.
Thank you. Brenda?
My, my thing was the weight issue, because evident, there's no sign up there, just telling me that it's weight shifted over by our house in this, for our end of Pine Street.
Yes.
It's only, SEAK, SEAK is the only one playing there, and there's no weight limit or anything, so.
Okay. Adam, do you have anything to share? Anybody else have anything to share about this issue? So it doesn't seem that there's a lot of support for this particular thing.
We don't do it, and we can follow up on the other issues that they brought up, but.
Does everybody feel comfortable with that? That we'll follow up on the, the bridge issue, but as far as we're concerned, we will not go forward with this truck exclusion? Okay? All right?
Will you follow up if that is another meeting or?
What we'll do is, we will follow up with the highway surveyor about the issues that were raised to date tonight. If you want us to put it on the agenda, again, we were happy to do that.
Well, we'd be, you know, we'd be pleasantly surprised to find out what it is, the plan is to fix it.
Sure, so why don't we do this? I know that the highway surveyor's been, really, and he's been working hard on equipment issues that we've, we've, we've come up with at the department, so let's give him a couple of weeks, if that's okay. We'll send a notice sometime in the next couple of days, explaining the people's concerns of the residents of Pine Street, and then we'll put you on the agenda next month, and we can ask the highway surveyor to be part of that.
Can we contact the state, or would you rather go to the highway surveyor?
Well, both.
If I want from my office, we can contact the state and find out if.
I would recommend putting on the agenda for the 12th of December, not the 20th, you know, but we've already pretty much booked the 20th.
Yes, is that, is that agreeable to everybody? Okay, all right, great. Thank you so much for coming in, really appreciate it.
And Bonnie, if you have the money.
I love that I know animals, everybody on the street.
We can pay Bridgewater off, but.
Do you have the agenda?
Well, they could be stupid, really, and they're built up, they got.
So where, 7:45 on the 12th?
So 7:45 on December 12th.
Okay.
We don't need stockings.
We will have a trade.
It was awesome seeing you, Brenda. We miss you around these parts. Doing well? Awesome, awesome. All right, thank you, everybody, for coming in and being part of the discussion.
Because we're moving on, we got an 8:45 on Hudson Street.
Yeah.
Are we looking for an empathy vote here or?
No. All right, oh, are you here for Hudson Street? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
You're in, you're in. So again, what, the situation here was that we had a request that, as we just did with Circuit Street and with, what was the other one?
We just did it to Circuit, Laurel Street.
Laurel Street.
To, while.
Thank you.
Putting up thickly settled speed limit, 25 miles per hour signs there, stood similar signs go up for Hudson Street. So we sent out a note out to the residents there and asked them to come in or submit comments, and I guess many of them are here tonight.
All right, who's here to talk about Hudson Street? Woo!
Now, does this include joggers, too, at the 25 mile an hour?
That's it.
Joggers.
I run, I run on Hudson, so I can tell you.
Yeah, that's my problem.
I'm the person that sent the original.
So when you speak, if you can identify yourself, please give your name and address to Pam so that she's aware of who's speaking.
Sure, my name is Peter Haley, I live at 35 Hudson Street, and I just requested because from Pond Street and our end of Hudson, up through where the bridge, the crossover into East Bridgewater is, especially right by their house, these are the, my neighbors, the curve right at John Wade Drive is pretty sharp, and people just tear around it.